We're going to call to order the regular school board meeting of Tuesday, July 16th, 2013, held at the historic old Central High School Board Room at approximately 6:31. Uh, Member Murneke, could you please call roll?
Member Cameron, Member Johnson, Member Casper's here, I'm here, Members Slegapunko, Member Wasson, Member Westholm, Assistant Superintendent Crawford, Deputy Clerk Bill Hanson, Secretary Melinda Thibault, and Caitlin Perch, and Eric Thibault. Thank you. We have a forum.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Member Murneke. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our individual will with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, Board members. If you want to, please open your packet to our, uh, agenda. Could I get a motion to accept the agenda, please? Made by Member Slegapunko, seconded by Member Wasson. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Could we move on then to the reading and approval of minutes from our June 18th Board Meeting? Uh, could I get a motion to accept?
Still move.
Made by Member Westholm, seconded by, uh, seconded by Members Slegapunko. Any discussion? Member Johnston?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I do have one item. It's on page eight, on the bottom. Oops. Let me think. It's better. Uh, page eight on the bottom, that's on adoption of the budget. Again, I made a motion in the last meeting to eliminate the 4.9 million transfer from the general fund to the debt fund, which is on page eight, one and 18 of that budget. This motion isn't recorded. Such action would have totally eliminated this year's projected deficit and would have allowed us to decrease class sizes and increase curriculum. Motions must be recorded per school board bylaw 9110, and I quote, "Again, the minutes of the regular and special meetings of the school board shall include a record of each motion placed before the school board, including the member making the motion and the member seconding, if anything." I have previously given copies of this bylaw to the superintendent and the chair, and the refusal of this board to even acknowledge this issue or to respond to this violation of our own bylaws is unacceptable, uh, by the action. And I want an explanation from the chair of why bylaw 9110 is not being followed. I've asked for this three times, and now I'm going to ask for one right now.
Are you finished, Mr. Johnston?
I'm expecting you to answer me. Yes.
And I'll get to that. Member Slegapunko.
Thank you, Chair Casper. Of course, we have gone through this dozens of times, that if a motion does not receive a second, it is not officially a motion, and it just dies. So there is no official motion. We have talked about this numerous times. I don't even know how many times. It's been at least several dozen. Um, so I just want to put that on the record. We have even had legal counsel about that. If a motion has no second, which these motions did not have seconds, they are not officially motions. And you have been cited, um, we have as a board had that cited as far as from Roberts' Rules of Order. And can I just address one other thing? We do have a, um, a board member that is wearing campaign material, and I think that that is probably illegal. So I just want to make that comment because I don't think that should be there. Thank you.
Member Johnston?
I could suggest Members Slegapunko could maybe ask the police to come in and arrest me again like she did a couple of years ago. It would be another exciting start of a meeting and make this go fast. Uh, uh, the other one is that I've quoted our bylaws. Our bylaws run us. Our bylaws are very clear. Roberts' Rules of Order is very clear also. That motions that are made will be put in the minutes. There's no question about that at all. I quote you the bylaw. I assume, Mr. Chair, that you have read that bylaw. There's absolutely no question whatsoever about what the bylaw says. I'm asking it to be enforced. I brought this up four months ago. You said you had any legal opinion. You didn't. And I'm suggesting you read it.
Are you finished? If you're finished, you can shut off your light.
No. I'm not.
Well, you've asked me to respond. Now you want to continue to talk? Okay.
Is it done or yet?
Go ahead.
Yeah. And I think, uh, I think I deserve an answer. The community deserves an answer, and people make motions. It's important to record for the community what people are talking about. And when that isn't done, that's, uh, not appropriate, and it's not right in addition to violating our bylaws, which I've read them verbatim.
Okay, now are you fini-- okay, thank you. Um, I have asked for a legal opinion, and I've talked to Mr. Hanson, Mr. Gronseth, um, our legal counsel, and we are within the rights of Roberts' Rules to do what we're doing, and I will, um, uh, trust their judgment and their opinion on that. Um, anything else, Member Johnston?
I'd like to remind everybody that those people you mentioned are not parliamentarians. I've asked many times over the last four years that we've had volunteers, people that would come in and do that. We've asked to revise our bylaws. If you don't like this, if you don't want to have motions in the thing, why doesn't somebody revise our bylaws? Our bylaws, or some of these bylaws are 30 years old. I'm bringing this up because, first of all, this is one bylaw which is good, and secondly, none of the people you quoted have any parliamentary experience whatsoever.
And thank you for your opinion, Member Johnston. Uh, moving on, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the Tuesday, June 18th Board Meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries seven zero. Uh, moving on to, uh, school and community recognition. Uh, Mr. Crawford, are you going to be handling that, or who do we have that's going to be reading that?
Yes, I will.
Hold on a second there.
I will be reading it, so I'm asking the board members to, uh--
And why don't we have you step down there as well, if we could, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Board members, if you would please, uh, join, um, members out front. If you'd like, we have a recognition of a young man, uh, here, and we're going to apologize to his parents that were not very well dressed for this evening's event, considering the heat, so.
First of all, I would ask, uh, Bill Manor and his parents to step up. Members of the board, this month, I'm pleased to present a very special student for recognition. Bill Manor, East High School, recently traveled to Washington, DC to participate in the National History Day competition. He and two members of this group, of his group, presented a project called Ida Tarbell's Expose of Standard Oil: A Turning Point in Journalism. They received a silver medal in that competition. National History Day is a year-round academic program open to elementary and secondary students. They choose a historical topic related to an annual theme, and then conduct primary and secondary research, which can include everything from looking through libraries and archives to conducting interviews. After analyzing the research, students, uh, present their work. More than 500,000 students throughout the United States participate. This year's theme was turning points. Billy and his group successfully competed in regional and state competition before qualifying for the national level. It's Billy's fourth year reaching the national contest. He first became involved in the History Day competitions as a student in Holy Rosary. Congratulations, Billy.
intermediate baseball player, and, uh, had a great time with both him and the other kids on the team, and teaching the kids how to play and how to enjoy baseball. And the thing I remember always about Billy was he was always there and always ready to play. Uh, Billy also went on to, uh, spend many years at Chester Bowl as a ski cadet volunteering, and I think he at one time volunteered more hours to the ski cadet program than any other child in the program that year. I think he was there every day it was open, I believe. Um, so Billy is quite a dedicated young man, and certainly with the guidance of his parents, um, and others in the community is, is really a shining example, not only of what our community is producing in, in our children, but also what our schools are producing for our future. So congratulations again, Billy. Job well done, and, uh, good luck into the future. All right. Moving on to audience participation. Member Johnston, do we have anybody, uh, signed up to speak? Going to remind folks that they have three minutes to address the board regarding a, a topic pertinent to the, uh, decisions of the, the, uh, school board. Uh, remind you to be, um, thoughtful, respectful, and, uh, informative in your conversations with us. We are here to listen to your concerns today. We will not, or more than likely will not individually address them. Uh, we will, will and do hear your concerns, and oftentimes take those concerns to, uh, to the, um, appropriate people as we're ready to speak, so, um, we have Member Murneke, who has chosen to take himself from the, from the, uh, stage to the pulpit, uh, for his three minutes of conversation.
Make sure we keep that three minutes close, too.
All right.
Members of the board, thanks for having me. I'm speaking as a Duluthian, not as a school board member, and, uh, good man Steve O'Neill passed away, as you probably know. And the thing about Steve is he did so much for the district. We have kids out there who don't have enough clothing in the winter. We have kids who don't have a nice place to sleep at night. We have kids who come to school without a breakfast, sometimes with not much of a dinner. And Steve was one of those just God-chosen people who came down and said, "I'm going to help. I'm going to do something about it." And he did. Now, he was a county commissioner, and what I always thought about when I saw Steve at work was, he cared. He wasn't angry. He wasn't fist pounding. He wasn't out for an agenda. Just wanted to help people. And so, as a district, I think we should all thank Steve so much for all he did for all of our children in our, in our school district, in our schools. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Member Murneke, very nicely done, and, and I'll reflect upon that as well. I've known Steve for about a decade or so and always found him to be so engaged in, in helping the community and helping the less fortunate in our community, and it was really his life's calling, and until the day he died, it was, um, it was at the paramount of everything he did. All right, our next speaker is Rosie Lefler Kemp, followed by Dick Haney. Welcome, Rosie.
Rosie Lefler Kemp, 2002 Bald Eagle Trail, and thank you for that, uh, reflection on Steve O'Neill. He was a very close friend of mine, and I too have a quick story. He came to Leicester Park at our school forest, which I know you all heard our presentation on a few months ago, and he helped plant trees with our, our kids last year there. So we'll be thinking of Steve a lot as those trees grow. Uh, I just, uh, wanted to come here to really thank you as a school board. Uh, I have four children here in the Duluth Public Schools, three children that have graduated. My son Seth just graduated from Duluth East. Uh, he had a tremendous education, and even with some challenges he faced, he, he got such incredible support from school staff, uh, this year, and, uh, we look forward to him going on to McAllister College next fall. But I wanted to, uh, thank you for the article that was in the paper about the community input meetings that were held throughout the winter, and, uh, just, uh, presenting to the community, um, the concerns that, that came out of those meetings. And I participated in a number of those meetings, and as I've already been door knocking, uh, for, um, uh, my school board campaign, where I'm hearing some really wonderful things from people in the community about our school district. And, uh, the three areas you focused on, class sizes, bullying, and, um, uh, closing the achievement gap, um, I think I write on, and, um, I just really wanted to take a minute to thank you, because you're not thanked enough, uh, as well as, uh, that article really helped. The public wants to hear what came out of those community meetings, and so I thank you all for participating and, and just keeping, uh, the public involved, uh, through those discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosie. Our next speaker and our final speaker of the, uh, evening, and also reminding any other folks in the audience, if they would like to address the board, they can still sign up to do so. Um, Dick Haney, welcome, Dick.
Thank you, Chairman Casper, board members, and school administrators. I'm Richard Haney. I'm an aged citizen in the city of Duluth with a lifetime devoted to encouraging people to live healthy, active lifestyles. I wish to speak tonight in support of connectivity in Duluth, particularly connectivity of parkways and trails, bikeways and pedestrians, and specifically the easement, uh, through the old central property, uh, that will enable a significant connection in the city of Duluth. As an educator, physical educator, environmental, environmentalist to a certain extent, uh, we have two tragedies, I think, in our country today with, with the personal wellness of children all the way through adults, uh, the lifestyles that we're leading, and also with the impact that we're having, uh, on the earth and, and the environment. Uh, so I've become, remained active, uh, even though retired officially. I still do some teaching and encouraging people, participating in civic activities to promote, recently to promote the development of, of trails. Uh, I commend the, uh, the board, uh, as did the previous speaker, and the school administration for tackling some very difficult, having courage, having, tackling some very difficult decisions in the last few years. Uh, and I'm aware of the financial straits also, uh, that, that are facing the, the district in the next few years. Uh, I think there are some very big pluses that, uh, can be added to our public education system, but also to the people of the community. I see what's refreshing in the last few years, a willingness on the part of different public agencies, the public schools, the University of Minnesota Duluth, Scholastica, uh, and some of the others that operate in their own little sphere, coming together to do something as, as a city, and breaking down some of the barriers that I see have existed. A connectivity of trails is one of those. Been currently working on a Lowell to Lake, what we call a Lowell to Lake Walk trail, uh, that involves Scholastica and UMD, but also, uh, five public schools and a couple of, uh, private schools that would enable transportation, uh, multimodal types of transportation and multi-use. This trail that's coming through Central, uh, the traverse option is referred to as, as a mountain biking trail. I want to mountain bike, but the steepest slope I dare to travel on nowadays is Minnesota Avenue down to Long Park Point. But it is, uh, uh, it's important to note that that particular trail, which crosses the, the public property of, of Central High School, the school property, um, is, uh, is significant to, uh, in several ways to the city of Duluth and to, and to the, uh, the children that go there. The value of the property, I believe, supported by what's happening nationally, regionally, uh, and locally, is that by making, uh, providing for, for access, multimodal of access, walking, biking, uh, wheelchairs, as well as motorized transportation.
Dick, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Thank you, Tom. I will do that.
Thank you.
Uh, so I encourage you to, uh, to support this. I think it is significant, and the evidence that I spoke of is the Lake Walk, uh, locally, and, and, uh, also the, the private developments, Bluestone Ridge, uh, and, uh, Builder, where a private developer has asked us to command and has included trails in the plan that would connect with it. I encourage your support of the easement across that property. I think it would be, I know it would be a big benefit to the, to the, uh, people of Duluth, children, and also to those who purchase the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes our, uh, part of our agenda for our audience participation. Board members, turning next to the reading of communications.
There are none.
There are none. Uh, moving on then to the report of super, the superintendent. We have Assistant Superintendent Crawford in Superintendent Gronseth's place. Take it away, sir.
I got it. Thank, thank you. I know that if Superintendent Gronseth was here, he would briefly talk about the district-wide continuous improvement plan, which is one of the action items recommended for your approval tonight. This comprehensive plan is the result of the district's Think Kid initiative that began almost a year ago, when Superintendent Gronseth first talked about the need for a community conversation about our Duluth public schools and providing opportunities for citizens across Duluth to share what is valued in education and to identify common beliefs about what students and the community as a whole should gain from our schools. The result is a four-year comprehensive plan with guiding principles and specific goals aligned with our three district aims that will impact our district, our schools and classrooms for years to come. They are a high achievement for all, safe and welcoming environment for everyone in our schools, an effective, efficient system. These goals will provide everyone in our district a roadmap that will guide our mission and vision as we move towards providing each student with the skills and experience they need to learn, grow, and be successful. To that end, I'm very excited for our district departments and our schools to work towards achievement of these goals, as they create and develop their school improvement plans this fall. Let me end, let me end by quoting our superintendent, who puts it so eloquently. "It will take the entire community to realize the vision we have created. Together, we can build stronger schools, a stronger community, and with it, a stronger future." Finally, I know that he would also express his thanks and gratitude to everyone who took part in this process. The information gathered through these community meetings was invaluable." Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Crawford. Moving on to our standing report, uh, committee's, um, Education Committee report.
This is the Education Committee, uh, report for Tuesday, July 16th, 2013. Information items, um, there are none. Grant applications, there are none. Regulation 5040R, student transfers, revisions to Regulation 5040R, student transfer were presented for information purposes only. Assistant Superintendent Crawford was available to answer questions. It's recommended the school, uh, school board receive this as informational. And number, uh, two is action items, um, presentation items that are requiring approval. Um, as Assistant Superintendent Ed Crawford just said, uh, Superintendent Bill Gronseth did an excellent job presenting this at the Education Committee meeting last week. Um, this is a very aggressive plan, and although I will not be sitting up here with you as board members, I will be watching from afar as a community member to make sure that it's carried through, and I agree with you, Assistant Superintendent Crawford, it does, uh, involve the total support of the entire community, and I will be one of those community members supporting this. Uh, it's recommended that the school board approve the district-wide continuous improvement plan. Uh, B is Resolution E-07133109, acceptance of grant awards to public schools. Uh, resolution, I'm going to just read it right now and move it for approval, it's located on page 15. Um, resolution, acceptance of grant awards to public schools, whereas Minnesota Statute for 65.03 requires the school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth public schools. Uh, now therefore, be it resolved that the school district does accept, uh, below-described grants from said organizations in accordance with terms as set forth herein, and be it resolved that the Duluth Public School wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations, and there is one from Northland Foundation, the amount of 3,000, and from the Purpose Center for Arts for 86, 85,659. Move Resolution E-07133109, dated July 16th, 2013, for approval.
Could I get a second? Seconded by Member Wasson. All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries seven zero. Back to you, Member Cameron.
And item C is access to Internet, student data, non-district employees. It's requested that the following organization be granted access to the student information system to support district functions from July 1st, 2013 to June 30th, and that's the YMCA in Luther Social Services, and both of these organizations are very involved with our schoolchildren. It's recommended the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above, access to Internet student data, non-district employees. And D is probability and statistics adoption. The Duluth Public Schools Mathematical Committee is recommending the purchase of the stats in Your World 2012 textbook. The total cost of this purchase is 7,935.7. It's recommended the school board accept and approve this item. And E is diploma requests. We have a number of students listed, Scott Lyons, um, Scott Allen Lyons, Chantelli Lace, Marie Owl, Chance John Collins Fisk, Megan Ann Adams Bailey, Joel Henry Philatrot, I hope I'm not messing up these names, Amala Shear, Hopson, Devin Larson, Jessica Jo O'Leary. It's recommended that the Dul, uh, school board accept and approve, uh, the above diploma requests. And item F is 2013 graduates. It's recommended by administration that the official minutes include a certified list of June 2013 grad, graduates as submitted by the respective high schools. Recommend the school board accept and approve this item, and Chair Casper, I move the remaining Education Committee report.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Member Johnston?
Two A, one. Discussed?
Two A, one. Okay. Anything else? Member Slegapunko?
Yeah, I guess, now that I look at that, that's the same one I have, two A, one.
Okay. All right, any others? Um, all right, it's to you, Member Johnston.
Um, you're milky. Cord's not long enough. Okay, um, again, I support this. This is a good and necessary start. I do have a couple of concerns that I want to express, or we just received this last week. And a couple of the concerns that I've got are, um, this is already on our website, it's been discussed in the media, uh, quite extensively already, and yet we haven't really approved it. And that I think that is, uh, is a concern, that we're being asked to approve something today, but yet, uh, it's already obviously being promoted and done. I mean, this is good, don't get me wrong, I'm just thinking that the, that before, this is being promoted by the media, to the media, I should say, that either we shouldn't be doing this, or it should have been done before we promote it. Uh, that's a process thing, but I think it's kind of important to, uh, to have that discussion. I have a couple of other points. Uh, Mr. Chair, should, again, it looks like Member Murneke wants to, should I just go, I've got a couple of points, I can just go one at a time, or do you want to answer-- got a couple of points, I can just go one at a time, or do you want to answer my first?
Go ahead.
You want me to go ahead? Uh, why don't you go ahead?
Member Johnston, why don't you continue?
Sure. Okay. No problem. Um, I do have a couple of substance issues with this, not, not issues, but additions that I think are important. We as a board who are looking at this as a constant improvement process, as well as a superintendent said to maybe even evaluate the, uh, the superintendent in the future. Uh, and one of those is that, uh, reversing the student decline is not included. Uh, I think addressing the student decline is critical to building a stronger future. I apologize for not having time to get this off to the superintendent by email, you know, try to just, uh, do this. This is important, you know, as we have lost about sixteen hundred student enrollment since the start of the long-range facility plan the last, uh, six years. Uh, unfortunately, we have not stopped the student decline, and it's now seven hundred less than was predicted when the plan was first put in place. This year alone, we lost between a hundred and fifty and two hundred students, depending on how you do the count. Uh, again, this such a drop is meant to drop at almost ten million dollars in revenue. Uh, this loss, this loss obviously must be stopped, and I guess a suggestion I would have to the superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Crawford would be to, uh, include, uh, I'd like to have a goal, in fact, a goal that I would like to have is that we add, the next five years, we add a thousand students to our population. That puts us back to ninety-five hundred, and I think it's a really important issue to address, because if we don't bring back these students, we're losing so much money. It's just very important. Um, another issue, I've got one, may I continue? Mr. Chair, does anybody want to discuss these as I go, or should I continue? Mr. Chair, excuse me. Okay, go ahead. Um, our general fund reserve balance has decreased from about twenty-five million dollars six years ago to an estimate of one million dollars this next year. And this violates our Financial Policy 3017, which requires about a ten million dollar minimum balance. It also means we're very close to statutory operating debt, uh, which I think is a very serious matter. And I don't want to have a discussion now about how we got here, because that's long, but I would like to find out from the principal what he would intend to do about that. And I would, again, propose to the superintendent to have a goal in the next five years, this is kind of a five-year plan, rightly so, increasing our general fund revenue balance to fifteen million dollars, uh, which would be what our, what our policy states, and I think it's so important to have our finances in order that I think it's important to have in a, in a continuous improvement plan such as, as this. Um, the, the, what is one goal called prioritizing general fund spending to instruction and support of students, and that's very, very important and very laudable, although everything he's got in here is very good. I just, I'd like to have an addition, though, to this one, as all well, is that there is a big hole in our budget. And, uh, in the last five years, we permanently transferred about twenty-nine million dollars from the general fund to the long-range operating debt, and this year is probably going to be eight million dollars. And this obviously is not sustainable, and I'd like to see a sort of acknowledgement of that, and I would like to see that transfer being eliminated from the general fund, again, so we can increase, um, so we can decrease the student-teacher ratios, we can increase our curriculum, which is something that we have the authority and the power to do. And of course, that's going to take discussion and serious communication with our constituents. But those three items, and I'll try to get these into email to, um, Assistant, uh, Superintendent Crawford, just to do that, but those are items I think would, would, are important to, uh, add a good, a good program that we've got here, make it even better, I think address some things that we really have to address as a school head-on. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Member Murneke, I believe, is next.
When, um, counties, cities, school districts look at where they're going, what they want to do, they put out a plan and they say, this is, this is what we'd like to do, and what it does is it invites public input. Uh, what Superintendent Gronseth put together, I thought, was phenomenal. We sat through this presentation, and it was well-done and from the heart. Um, because you put it on a website doesn't mean it's been adopted. You put it out there and say, this is what, what we're planning on doing, what do you think? And we can get input before we, we get approval. Basically, this is an action item that requires approval, but it's certainly nothing out of the ordinary to put a proposal out on the, on a, on a website, say, this is what we have in mind.
Thank you, Member Murneke. Member Seligapunko.
Thank you, Chair Casper. Um, I just want to mention, you know, the, under the high achievement for all, and I apologize for not being there last Tuesday, um, one of the things, I love this continuously improve and enhance the quality of our curriculum and align it to state standards. The one thing, I went to, I think, five, um, of the community meetings, and one of the things I heard really loud and clear was, um, our specialists at the elementary school and the arts, how important they are in our district. And, um, of course, they do enhance our curriculum and, um, raise, um, the achievement level of all kids, and I just, just want to make note that how important the arts are in our, our district, and that that is a really strong part in our curriculum. So I just want to make mention of that, especially, you know, art, music, and fayed especially, that I've heard, um, that are really important in our district. I mean, every single meeting I was at, that was one of the top two. So, just wanted to mention that, um, under that curriculum part. So, thank you.
Thank you, Members Seligapunko. So, if I understand correctly, you're suggesting art in the schools.
Art, music.
I was just kidding.
No.
Member Watson.
Um, I'll just back up a little bit. I think, um, as Member Murneke said, it, it's so important for, um, the superintendent to launch such a huge project, and you can't help but have the media come and help us get the word out to the public to be at these meetings, we want your input. Um, and as you said, to go, to go online and see what we're doing and where we're headed is essential to making this work. We want the public buy-in. We want the community input. Um, and we can't sit back and be negative nellys. Um, you know, that, we have to, we know the population's going to grow again, we've known for years that it was going to decline. We are not like other, unlike other districts in the state. I've been traveling around and reading papers and reports, and everyone is pretty much dropping down in enrollment. So it's not unusual that this is happening, it's something we expected. Um, I think when we all, as a community, start thinking schools and positive for kids and education, they'll be buying when there's, when there's negative and, and, you know, people coming up against each other, people see that and they back away. So I, I think it takes all of us across every area of this beautiful city of ours to make sure that we're, um, talking education and kids and keeping it positive, and that, understanding that this is a lofty goal, but the superintendent said that he will bring it to all meetings and committees, he will make sure that everyone's talking the talk and walking the walk. So I commend him for doing that, and, um, I'm looking forward, as Member Cameron said, to making sure that it, it does get done.
Member Johnston.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I want to, again, uh, uh, Member Murneke, you know, you're right, and I think that's, it's a good point, and, you know, again, it wasn't a strong point of mine, it was a little bit, seemed like it was a little bit premature, but you make a very good point, and I think that, that, uh, we have to have discussed this, and that's good. So, so thank you for pointing that out, and if I didn't miss that. But, but again, again, I, I agree, this is a good thing, you know, again, by bringing up some suggestions, as not being negative, I think, you know, again, I think people, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for, yes, I am art in the school, and, uh, it's, it's a good joke, but it's very important. I attend a lot of the music conferences, I'm a music and art guy as well, are my sons. And it is kind of, it is important, and I'm looking at some ways how we can track to make sure that we can develop these, these goals that we heard from the community, that we've all known. And one way to do that is to track the progress, I think, by tracking our students, you know, tracking our, our financial stuff, shape is a tool for that, I think it'd be very effective to do that. I'm not trying to degrade at all or be negative about the report, this is all good stuff, but that's a good tool we could use to help us get to that goal, so thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, uh, could we move to a vote on accepting the education report as stated? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries seven zero. Onto the Human Resources report. Um, Member Westholm, please. Hold on a second there.
Thank you. Um, first, Staffing Report Action Items, that's usually the first thing on our agenda. I'll briefly go through the numbers. Certified Appointments, there's five. Certified Co-Curricular, thirty-one. Certified Extensions, forty, forty. Certified Leaves, five. Certified Permanent Increases, two. Certified Recall From Labor Position or Location or FTE, three. Certified Resignations, one. Certified Retirements, two. Certified Summer School Positions and Location Condition, and that's a long one, and that is eighty-five. Um, and Certified Temporary Increase, two. Non-Certified Appointments, three. Non-Certified Extensions, nineteen. Non-Certified Layoffs, twelve. Non-Certified Leaves, seven. Non-Certified Permanent Decreases, seven. Non-Certified Permanent Increases, ten. Non-Certified Reclassifications, one. Non-Certified Resignations, one. Non-Certified Retirements, one. Non-Certified Summer School, forty-two, and Non-Certified Temporary Increases, one. And that's the, uh, Staffing Report for this month. HR Department, do you have any comments on, on that?
All right, could we move to the resolutions and do in those individually? Now, Member Westholm?
So, under other action items, first is HR, uh, number HR, HR-7-13-3110, and that's Termination of Certified Staff, Tenured Certified Staff. And I'll read that resolution. "Whereas enrollment in the school district is declining, whereas during the 2013-14 school year, the district will lack a sufficient number of pupils to support all tenured teachers currently employed by the district. Whereas the school board has found it necessary to discontinue certain positions, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, as follows. The Board proposes that the employment of the following tenured teachers terminate effective at the end of the school day on June 7, 2013, unless otherwise, unless another date is indicated below due to discontinuance of position or lack of pupils." And the person listed is Alan Retai, 1.0 FTE. Uh, we're going to rescind the layoff, uh, and so that's the proposal of, that's a resolution that we're facing right now.
Could you read the, the final part of the resolution, then, uh, just the resolution itself?
Okay. "The clerk of the school board shall notify all such tenured and teachers in writing of the proposed layoff, the grounds for the proposed layoff, and the right to request a hearing within ten calendar days after receiving said notice. The clerk shall also notify all such teachers that if they fail to request a hearing within ten days, they will be deemed to have acquiesced in the board's action." And again, that's Resolution HR-7-3-3110.
Could you move that?
And I move that, uh, resolution.
Uh, could I get a second? Seconded by Member Seligapunko. Any discussion? Member Johnston.
Well, uh, again, as I usually vote against these, I want to bring up an important issue here again, reiterate what's happening to our teaching staff. Well, this is just one, thank goodness, but, uh, last month we laid off, I believe it was nineteen, uh, FTE, proven FTE positions, and we're all saying enrollment, because enrollment in the school district is declining, therefore we're not increasing the student-teacher racial, but these positions are being decreased because of declining enrollment. Uh, I went back and looked at our records, you know, we've, uh, it looks like in six years we've, uh, lost an est, or we've eliminated an estimated one hundred and eighty teacher positions. And that's, of course, one reason we have a very high student-teacher racial. And, you know, I have to vote against this, as I vote all of them, because I think that we have, uh, we have the wherewithal to, um, to keep our monies in the general fund. And I would like to see motions on that, rather than going through, and again, eliminating one more teacher position, even though it may be small, but, uh, in a mass, it's, you know, one hundred and eighty in the last six years, and it's just one more continuation.
Member Johnston, I'm going to remind you that this is actually a motion to rescind a layoff, rather than to lay off an employee. So we are rescinding that action.
But if you read the body, it says rescind layoff.
On, where we laid off people, and this was actually eliminating the position. That's why I read it, and I was trying to hope that I'm wrong.
Would you please address that? Hold on a second there. There you go.
Board members, this position was laid off last month. Uh, we have since reinstated a program that ultimately caused this layoff. Uh, now there is not a need for the layoffs, so are rescinding this position and returning it back to its original state.
Member Johnston.
Sure. I mean, the, the thing reads, uh, "The Board Proposes that the employment of the following tenured teachers terminate effective at the end of the pay period on June 7, 2013," and maybe, maybe it's worded wrong.
I, I think it's worded correctly, but it's just stating that we're rescinding that layoff. He was on that layoff list, Matt, last month, you are correct in that, and we are now, this month, rescinding that as Member Sworfski, the reason why Member Sworfski stated, so...
Well, that's great. No, I, I thank you for that. But again, I think the wording should be clear that we're not terminating, but we're keeping them off.
Well, I'm sure we're following pretty specific language that is required by state law, so, uh...
Thank you. Thank you for that, uh, for that clarification. I'm glad I don't have to...
So I'm going to encourage you to support this.
I will, then. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, so seeing no further discussion, could we move to a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries seven zero. Uh, your next resolution, Member Westholm.
Okay. Whoops.
Don't touch that.
Ready?
There you go.
Okay. All right. "Termination of Certified Long-Term Substitutes," and again, reading the language, "whereas the school board desires to provide notice that long-term substitute teaching positions terminate on the date specified in the individual substitute teacher's contract or at the conclusion of the school year, whichever is earlier. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the employment of all long-term substitute teachers, including those listed below, shall terminate effective at the end of the school day on June 7, 2013, unless another date is indicated below or on the date specified in the individual substitute teacher's contract, whichever is earlier." And this is Bridget Idicker, and it's a change in the date to 8/30/13. Uh, any comment on that?
Why don't we finish a resolution?
Be it further resolved, I'm sorry. "Be it further resolved that the clerk of the school board shall so notify such teachers in writing before July 1, 2013." And again, that's Resolution HR-7-13-3111, July 16, 2013.
Could you move that?
I move that, uh, resolution.
All right, could I get a second? Seconded by Member Seligapunko. Any discussion? Um, seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, that carries six, one, please. Um, moving on to our...
Approval of Human Resources.
Oh, excuse me, we are now going to approve the entire, uh, Human Resources report for July 2007, 2013. Excuse me.
Before we...
Hold on a second, Member Westholm, please.
Okay. Okay. And this is more...
That is sticking there. Just a second, sir. That is sticking there. Just a second, sir.
Okay. This is just formality, but should read it because it's on our agenda. Informational items, there are no information items at this time. And future items, there are no HR future items at this time. So, that's, reading that into the record, and that concludes the HR report.
Okay. Any, excuse me, a second for that, please. Seconded by member Salika Punko. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six, or excuse me, seven zero. Moving on to our business committee report, member Salika Punko. We are really, we are really sticking here. Excuse us.
Use the stylus.
I'm not very stylish.
There it is. Thank you, Chair Casper.
All right.
Okay. This is the business committee report for Tuesday, July 16, 2013. All right. We have the financial report, all the different reports that you have seen, board members. Number two is bids, RFPs, and quotes. There are no bids, but there's an RFP for asbestos three-year reinspection and management plan update. It's recommended the school board approve entering into a contract with the firm listed above based on their low responsive proposal, as shown on the proposal tab, and letter of recommendation as provided in response to RFP number 298, asbestos three-year reinspection and management plan update. There are no policies and regulations. Number four, contracts, change orders, and leases. We have contracts. The workers' comp and property liability insurance policies and premium designation. It's recommended the Duluth School Board approve the insurance premiums for property, inland, marine, liability, automobile, crime, umbrella, and workers' comp insurance as modified by RJF Agencies, Inc., for the policy year from August 1st to August, August 1st, 2013 to August 1st, 2014. And board members, you receive this by email and also in your folders. And number two is the Grand School Community Collaborative, Blue Cross Blue Shield Project, and it's recommended the Duluth School Board approve the contract with Grand School Community Collaborative for $8,912. We have change orders listed below, and we have some resolutions. And I'm just going to go on and read the resolutions, if that's all right?
Yes, please.
Chair Casper? Okay. So, the first one is page fifty-three, board members, and it's resolution authorizing the reconveyance of real property to the state of Minnesota and execution of documents required for this purpose. I move Resolution B-7-13-3113 dated July 16, 2013.
Seconded by member Watson. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries seven zero. Back to you, member Salika Punko.
Okay. I have a resolution authorizing the purchase of real property near Nettleton School. I move Resolution B-7-13-3114 dated July 16, 2013. Second?
Seconded by member Watson. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries seven zero. Back to you, member Salika Punko.
Okay. The next page is resolution granting a pedestrian and bike trail easement to the city of Duluth at Central High School. Now, it still says draft here, but I'm going to move Resolution B-7-13-3115 dated July 16, 2013. Second?
Seconded by member Watson. Any discussion? Member Johnston. There we go. Just press it, and then let me work this thing here. We are having problems. There you go.
Oh, okay. Am I on?
You're on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just have, I've had the good opportunity to be, being able to attend some of the Park and Rec boards, and I hear a lot about from the city how important this is, as our speaker mentioned too. And it's, it's important everywhere, from the mayor on down, and I think this is a very good opportunity for us to get some of this through. I have a little bit of concern. One of the concerns are is that this may be in a wetland. I'm going to be voting for this, as I think that's the thing. I hope there's some technicality like that that could be, could be, hopefully can be worked out for that. But I certainly want to again express the strong support from the Rec Board and the city administration that I heard, as well as lots of the citizens that have came and talked to the Rec Board. So, just want to emphasize that. Thank you.
Thank you, member Johnston. Member Watson?
I appreciated the speakers, the speaker earlier tonight discussing this issue. I, I would like to make a motion to table this at this point. Carrie Leiter was not able to be at the business committee meeting for us to ask questions and answer. And I'd also like to wait until the planning commission zones the property before we move on this item. So, I'm moving to table.
Could I get a second? Seconded by member Salika Punko. Any discussion regarding the tabling of Resolution B-7-13-3115? Member Salika Punko?
Thank you. I guess I'm, I, you know, it would have been nice, I did have some questions for Mr. Leiter on this, and it still says draft. So, I actually was thinking it might still be in the works with us talking to the city. So, I'm not sure if we're ready to maybe vote on this. I think maybe if we could have some, a chance to ask some questions of Mr. Leiter in the next few weeks, I think that would, I'd, I'd feel more comfortable just because I'm not quite sure. It seems like it's changed so many times that I'm, I'm not sure exactly. Especially when I saw draft on here, I thought, eh, maybe it's not ready. So, I, I would like to maybe wait till next month just to, to get some of my questions answered about this and actually talk to Mr. Leiter about it.
So, just a point of clarification, member Watson has asked to table it. Are you making an amendment to that tabling to do it next month, or you?
Please.
Okay. Okay. Member Johnston?
Was there a second to that?
Yes.
There was. Okay. I think that, uh, member Salika Punko makes some good points. I think that there are things that could be clarified. I'm concerned, though I do have to express a concern that we've had some of these property transfer, transfers easements, and these aren't transfers. This is a pretty minor easement. Sometimes they go on a long time, and I'm worried here that if we can't move on, and I'm worried here by tabling it may delay movement on that and consequently may delay the city to move forward. So, even though I understand the reasons for tabling it, I do have to express a concern that we may, this may delay it too long and may not be able to have this be implemented this year. And I'm concerned about that.
Thank you, member Johnston. Member Murneke?
Mr. Heaney and I have been friends for a good long time. And I, and I just got cut out. There we are, I think. Yes. Mr. Leiter, shed some information for us. First of all, I do want to say, my mic went off. We all support this. We think, we're all for this. But I, but again, with the city and with, with the planning department, where as you know, we've, we have had some issues. Could you shed any light on this for us?
Mr. Leiter. Chair Casper, member Murneke, members of the board, I'm, it is unfortunate I wasn't able to be here at the business committee meeting, but even with that, it wasn't until I returned, I received on the fifteenth, on Monday, a communication from the city planning department, Keith Hamray, that provided some additional information regarding what he believes are the steps to rezoning this property and how it relates to this easement. I had some questions after reading his letter and feel that some additional time to have clarification in that matter would be advised. I believe, as I think the board is aware, that this particular easement or the function of the easement, which is to provide a bike trail across the property, led to some of the designations in the comprehensive land use that suggested there should be park zoning around the perimeter of the property, which significantly reduced the amount of land that the school board and the district would be able to sell or at least realize any value. Having read Mr. Hamray's letter, he's indicating that with the granting of this easement, he feels that he'll be able to move towards zoning that I think is consistent with what the school board wants for the entire property and not have to have zoning for park, which I think is our goal, and it sounds like the city is willing to work towards that goal as well. But some time to clarify that so we know exactly how we're going to proceed is important. And I think based on the draft resolution, as you can read, I did identify some language in there that sets some contingencies relative to the recording of this deed so that everybody knows that once a deed is recorded, there is assurances or it already has been accomplished that the property is zoned in a manner that's going to maximize the revenue and maintain that function for the community of a bike trail. I think both goals are, are objective, and we can come to that end. So, if it is tabled tonight for this month, perhaps that meeting with the city to clarify that and confirm that can take place, and perhaps it can even be on the agenda of the planning commission to reflect the type of zoning that would be consistent with what we want. And also, we can share with the planning commission the easement that the board would be posed to approve.
Member Murneke, you have a follow-up to that real briefly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Leiter. And my follow-up is, is, is there wouldn't be any construction this year. Even there's, we're still long in the planning stage, and, and, you know, again, none of us on the board want to obfuscate this. We, you know, we want, it sounds like a great idea, but we do have, you know, that park issue does spring up. And so, they weren't planning on moving any boulders this, this year, were they?
Hold on a second there. There you go.
Member Murneke, members of the board, I, I don't believe there is any construction planned. Regardless, I think it was the intent that this easement wouldn't become effective until we actually know that the rezoning of the property is accomplished in a manner that I think the school board's in agreement with.
Thank you, Mr. Leiter. Member Cameron?
I just want to say too, to Dick Heaney, that I support this, and I think that most of us have been approached by many, many members of the community who are in support of this. But I would be reluctant to approve anything that says draft on it. And, and the fact that there is a rezoning issue, I totally support tabling, but I, I have no concerns that it won't be approved eventually.
Member Johnston?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I've listened to discussion at the Parks and Rec Board, there was, there was hope. I'm not sure how realistic that was to actually start construction. This could have moved forward, but again, I don't know how realistic that was. And that's just what I heard at the Parks and Rec Board, and there was kind of hope on that, actually. But again, I'd like to kind of tell the community and all of us too here, again, I want to encourage everybody to kind of find out whatever, whatever. I think it's holding it up because we all want this. We met, we met with the city here, I think all of us here, it was a few weeks ago, talking mainly about things like zoning issue, how to work better as a, as a community or as a school board along with the community because almost all of our goals are identical. And it was a very good meeting. I'd met, I'd even met some of the schools, the city council members, and it was very good. Hope that we can, you know, just encourage here the administration to work what we can and certainly encourage the city to work with this or whatever the concerns that we've got on the zoning. Like to be able to say that, hey, this is an issue that we got resolved. We've kind of got over loggerheads, and if we could show the community, we can work together as a school board and a city council. That would be really cool, and this would be a nice project to be able to show that. So, I'm hoping that we can show that to the community and move forward.
Member Westholm?
Yeah. I, like other board members, I'm happy to see this finally happening. I, just a little historical perspective, the eight years I was the administrator at Central High School in the eighties and nineties, this issue or some related form of it came up fairly often. And during the time I was there, of course, nothing happened because of one reason or another. But again, it makes sense. It seems like a logical move, and so I, I support this, this easement. And it's a natural part of what we're trying to do in the city.
Thank you, member Westholm. We have a, an amendment or motion to table Resolution B-7-13-3115, and I see no further lights. Could we get a vote on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries seven zero to table that resolution. Back to you, member Salika Punko.
Could I abstain or not, please?
You'd like to abstain? All right. Six zero one. Back to you, member Salika Punko.
Thank you, Chair Casper. Let's see. We're on, let's see. Resolution adopting the district's health, safety, and environmental management program for 2013, 2014. I move Resolution B-7-13-3116 dated July 16, 2013.
Could I get a second? Seconded by member Watson. Any discussion? Member Salika Punko, do you have a discussion regarding that? No. Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries seven zero. Back to you, member Salika Punko.
Thank you. I move, let's see, Resolution Tenure Capital Facilities Plan 2013 Update. Be it resolved by School Board of Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, State of Minnesota, that the Tenure Capital Facilities Plan 2013 Update is approved. I move Resolution B-07-13-3117 dated July 16, 2013. Second?
Seconded by member Watson. Any discussion? Member Johnston?
Sure. I'm going to be voting against this. Just a, just a real quick discussion. Why? They add up to about nine million dollars and somewhere in there. I think some of these, not all of them, we have to plan ahead. I encourage that. But I think some of these can and should have been part of the long-range facility plans. So, consequently, I'm just going to vote against it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, member Johnston. Seeing no further lights, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six one. Back to you, member Salika Punko.
The resolution authorized student activity bank account signer, and these are just some changes in personnel at schools. I move Resolution B-7-13-3112 dated July 16, 2013. Second?
Seconded by member Watson. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries seven zero. Back to you, member Salika Punko. We have lots of resolutions.
Okay. And the last part is the informational items, and they're just, you know, information that we usually have. And then seven is future items. A is election-related resolutions which will be coming up the next couple of months. So, I move the remainder of the business committee report except for the resolutions, Chair Casper.
Could I get a second? Seconded by member Watson. Any discussion? Member Johnston?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to have a separate vote for one G and H. I'd like to have a separate vote for four A one and four A two.
Four A one and four A two. Okay?
And discussion on four B.
Okay.
Discussion on six F.
Six F. Okay. Anything else? All right. Let's go to your discussions. First, you're up with four B. Member Johnston?
Start or?
Yep.
I did, I did have, I did have one on, item one, two, or, I mean, we can start wherever you want.
You have separate votes for one G and H. I'm going to do those separately.
Okay. Sure. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to point out again, my complaints about the change orders, these ones mount to about $47,000. Some of them seem to be trivial, as usual. I'm just. Some of them seem to be trivial, as usual, I'm just expressing my concern about that.
All right, thank you, Member Johnston. Let's move on to your, your next one you'd like to discuss, which was 6F.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No.
Again, this is also change orders again, and, again, there's 19,000 on Congdon, 57,000 on Myers Wilkins, 15,000 on Lincoln Park Middle School. For total, 91,000 altogether with the ones I just mentioned, so $138,000 change orders. And I think that we can and should do better on those change orders. And I would make a motion to oppose that, but, you know, it won't get listed, so I'll just, my comments on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Johnston. We are now going to move to separate votes on the items that you singled out under 1G, which is the fundraisers. We are going to make a separate vote regarding that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries seven zero. 1H, which is investments in school children. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries seven zero. Workman's compensation, property liability, insurance policy, separate vote on that as well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Grant School Collaborative Blue Cross Blue Shield Project, separate vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries seven zero as well. That concludes our business committee report for July 2017. And that's what I'm doing right now. So we are going to vote, we have moved and seconded the entire report. All those in favor of the business report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six one. Board members, we are now on to, I lost agenda. Special resolutions, there are none. We are then on to questions or other. Seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Board members, move to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.